Okay. We're going to open the Selectman's meeting of May 21st. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. So we do have a 7:15 appointment with the Treasurer concerning the Conservation Commission Before we do the reorganization of the Board, I just wanted to give a public thank you to Tom for all of his many years of hard work and volunteerism to the town. And I'd also like to welcome Peg to the table.
Thanks, appreciate it. Happy to be here.
All right. So reorganization of the Board, the history has been that we generally, the newly elected or reelected member of the Board is the Clerk. The one who will be up for reelection next year is the Chair, and the one left is the Vice Chair. I don't know whether the Board would like to continue with that process, or I guess I will put it out there for nominations to be made for Chair.
Move to go ahead with the traditional.
All three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, is there anything else to be said?
Good luck.
All right, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, that's a vote. We have meeting minutes of May 14th, open session meeting minutes. I guess I would suggest that you not vote on this one since you weren't there.
Uh huh.
Paul, so you may want to wait for town council's review.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was going to ask too.
Hadn't heard back yet.
Pause.
And you haven't heard, okay.
Yeah.
All right, then why don't we put that off to the next meeting? All right, the next thing on the agenda, we have a couple of minutes, is the Mabel-Marble scholarships. We have award certificates to sign, which we did vote last meeting. And do we need a motion for that, Mary, or just a?
No, I think you can sign.
I think we already.
All right. The awards are going to Victoria Koval, Megan O'Day, and Piper Wasaki.
I was going to say you can just give Piper hers, but it looks like Eloise signed these two.
Mm-hmm.
But you don't have to mail it, you can just leave it here.
If you'd like, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to grab, Eloise's in the back of the room.
All righty.
Just trying to take this.
Sure. Thanks. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is updating our subsidized housing inventory update.
Did you want to do 3B?
Oh, 3B, I'm sorry. Yes, there was a late applicant for the Mabel-Marble scholarship, and Mary drafted a letter informing her of the late deadline. I don't know whether it's with the Board's approval. Will it sign?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's about 7:15, so come on up, Dennis.
One or two?
On my survey.
All right. This is good stuff.
Yeah?
As you're probably aware, there's a few properties that are being purchased by Conservation, and money coming from one is, that's anticipated from a grant, will go towards buying the second one, which both have to be closed by the end of the month, according to the folks that are selling it, the second parcel. So what we've done, because it's unsure when the first grant will come, we're doing a two-month borrowing to cover the part Conservation doesn't have until that money does come in. There's a chance we're going to do this transaction and spend interest money and some financial advisor money and not need it, but we've been advised to go ahead and do it with your final approval.
Okay.
So it will be for $126,075. It's called an SA-N, which is a little bit different than the term you've heard before. It's basically borrowed money anticipating a grant from the federal or state government. Chapter 90 from Town Meeting is an example of one of those. So the bidding process happened today by 11 o'clock, and it won't take a whole bunch of time, but there were three banks that bid on it. Two of them were at 2%. First bank to get in that bid won the bid, UniBank, who happens to be our financial advisor, separate group of people. And that's an example of where the rates are going in a short period of time, because when we did the first year of the fire truck, it was .89 for a year. This is just for two months, and now it's up at 2%, so.
Is that because the shorter-term loan, or just the way things are going?
The way things are going, and there are a lot of towns that are getting to bind in June, and it's a mess out there. The rates screw up because everybody's borrowing short-term to cover this or that. So we need a vote from you agreeing that we want to do this borrowing, and if you do, we have some official paperwork to sign and be notarized by the Town Clerk.
Okay.
The first property, just for the record, was Great Oak Farm, and the second are two parcels up on Lyman called Oberge. I believe that one is a big chunk of land, eight years, some big, is part of Pisgah, that section up there, so.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll be at the point where, until Community Preservation, we only have that $50,000 a year coming from Solomon Pond. That's going to be going into the Conservation Fund, so they'll pretty much be really low on funding.
All right. So you need a motion from us to approve the borrowing?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, anything else?
Any questions?
When will the grant come in, Ish?
June 1st. Oh, I'm sorry. They don't know.
That's the problem.
It's been approved, but we don't know how long it's going to take the payable system of the state to issue the check. So the DOR is working with us, they're aware of the situation, but at some point they have to pull the trigger and activate the approval and tell the bank, go ahead and send the town borough on the money. So we're expecting the funds in June 1st.
Okay.
The closing's on June 4th, I believe, unless it gets extended. And that's always a fluid kind of a situation with Conservation, so I'm not sure if they've got a week extension.
Is there a chance that the grant money could come in before?
Correct.
Yeah.
The interest is $421.40, and the fee from the financial advisor is about $500.
Okay.
And we're pushing to have that all paid for by Conservation. There's none in the Treasurer's budget that wasn't anticipated, so that'll have to be worked out with the accountant.
Okay.
Are there any early payoff fees? If you pay it off early?
For two months, there's no.
Nothing, okay.
No. The only time you get an early payoff usually is on a permanent borrowing at the 10-year point, like we did with this school and like we did with this building. It's called a refunding. We paid the school off 10 years ahead of time, and we saved close to $100,000 of interest by refunding for this building. The interest rates went down. But they're heading the other way right now, so.
All right, we have a motion on the table in a second. If there's nothing else to be said, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Okay. The Town Clerk's going to have to notarize this. Let me fix a seal.
Right there, this is the three Selectmen.
And one of the things we have to do is certify to the federal government that this is an interest-free, the discount for discounted interest. We're about a percent lower than what the private corporations would pay for the same loan, because we're a municipality. So the IRS always gets. That's down here. I believe I signed another page, too. Already done.
Just the one page, right? Yep. We're going to make sure we sign everything we're supposed to sign tonight.
Okay.
It's a second copy of the same one?
Okay.
This is different than most borrowings also because there was no vote at Town Meeting required, and normally we certify this page saying there was one. So Kelly will be saying no vote was required, and she'll be signing that.
Okay.
Okay, I guess that's it. Now, do you want to copy? After she signs it, we'll scan it in for tomorrow. And it'll be at the DOR tomorrow, so.
Terrific. Thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah, I was going to say, thank you, you and June, both for figuring out how to make this work, because I know it was complicated.
Yeah, we know.
We're aware.
Thanks, Eloise. So, moving on, we're going to number four, is that subsidized?
Yes.
Housing inventory update. All right. So we have an update. We've added one more town, or one more, one more home.
One town's plenty.
Yeah. Four Bigelow Drive is being added to our list of subsidized housing, which will push the town over the 10% affordable housing threshold. Where's the confetti?
So does that mean no more applications, no more completions? What does that mean from a practical standpoint?
First the state has to. The state has to send us back an updated subsidized housing inventory, that's what this filing is, and this one would just push us fractionally over that 10%, and it would prevent 40B development, further 40B development.
Further new applications or further existing?
You can't, if it's already been approved, we can't do anything.
Is that the only one that's in the?
That is correct.
Yep. And the apartments should be pulling permits soon, too, which would push us much further over, so hopefully we won't have to worry about this for.
For a while.
Because they keep looking at every 10-year snapshot, so we're looking, we're working with 10% of the 2010 census, and there'll be another snapshot, the 2020 census, and if all the apartments are built out, we'd be at the upper 13%. So that's going to be the next way to inoculate the town, will be that project. But this would, as long as DHCD approves of this, this would stop it until 2020.
So this is a form that's needed to be sent in that, with your permission, I will sign, and we'll send it back. And get credit. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All right, anything else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have bill schedules. And the first one was a reimbursement for software for our volunteer who is doing the Selectman's newsletter, but also the Council on Aging newsletter. And is she looking for anything from Council on Aging?
I mean, at one point there was talk of splitting it in half, but I mean, the whole thing is $70, and right now she uses the workout program to do the Powderhouse News up until that runs out, which it has, and now she's basically doing it for free. She has done our newsletter for free up until this point, so basically she's asking for $7 reimbursement for something she's done for free all year.
Okay, and this is an annual, I would assume.
It would be an annual thing.
So I guess my question to you and Peg is, is this something that's going to set a precedent as far as software that someone can use, an employee can use from home? That was my concern.
Well, if we don't want to do it that way, we can do it, we could offer her a $70 stipend, we could do this in any number of ways, but I do think it's not unreasonable for her to ask for reimbursement for something that she only uses the software for, the Powderhouse News and the newsletter she does for us.
Agreed, no issue.
No issue. Go ahead, do the reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think it sets a precedent. I think this is something.
All right. That was my question at the last meeting.
I don't think so.
Okay, then, do I hear a motion to approve the $69.99 Selectman expenses?
Motion to approve.
Uh, seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I think you just need to sign the front one.
Okay, so this one?
Yep. Just this one. The second expense is for printing and mailing of our town report. The reasons are estimating these costs for 16 months before the costs are incurred is very difficult. The actual number of pages and mailing costs cannot be controlled, and the postal rates often change for this type of mailing. So the amount is for $4,405.17.
Well, the actual picture is the 800 picture.
Oh, the 800 picture, that was the total cost, sorry. The amount requested is 805.17. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and do we need a signature? I don't believe so.
Yes, on the left, right next to June's signature on the left.
Oh, okay, here we go. That's you. No, no, that's not you anymore. Sorry, clerk!
Hi, that's me. All righty.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. We're talking about the draft review Selectman appointments. I know these just came this afternoon, I don't know if you want to take a look through them during the week?
That would be a good idea, but the only thing is there are just some things that were in yellow that I think either the Board has questions on, or I have questions on.
Wait a minute here, there's a couple of these. There you go.
So I sent out an updated one, fate of the Selectman.
Okay, I think I have it. I think that's what I have up in here.
On page two? The ADA Coordinator, right under simple annuals.
Yeah. Question about wanting to continue?
Well, above that, the ADA Coordinator?
Yes.
Do you think that that might be the Building Inspector, or do you think that the Selectman might want to take that up?
I would assume the Building Inspector is up to speed on ADA.
I'd imagine more so than anybody else.
Right.
What does that role actually do? Because I didn't actually see Tom do much.
Historically, in the time I've been here, zero, even though we've had accessibility issues that might need exploring.
Okay.
But I would think in the future, things like complete streets and sidewalks downtown, an elevated project to the library, a wellness trail, there might be several different things where that would be handy.
Would you like me to speak to Joe before we appoint him to yet another thing?
Unless you'd like to take the appointment, if Joe doesn't.
That's fine. It doesn't sound like it's a really taxing one currently, but I mean, it could be something that we pursue, so before we put more on Joe's plate, I'd like to make sure that.
That's all right with him?
That's all right. Or, you know, that it makes sense to him.
All right, sounds like a plan.
And then the committee after it, it's kind of, no less to whether or not they want, they felt the need to continue at all.
Does the ADA Coordinator take advantage of the Study Committee, or?
Not in my experience here.
Okay.
What was the ADA Study Committee formed for?
I don't really know, historically it may have been in response to a law, maybe that we're supposed to have one.
I was going to say, Eloise isn't in here anymore.
No.
I'm guessing it may have had to do with building the school, or?
Let me research, I can find some information.
You could ask.
That sounds like something Eloise would have.
Yeah, Eloise probably know, or Peg Sardell.
Page two. At least you want to stay as the alternate Berlin rep, or do you think that that should, is that rotating, or do you want to?
First, is that for Devon's?
No, that's CMRPC.
CMRPC.
Being the alternate to Tim.
Tim, I mean, Tim takes care of that.
True. Do you want to stay as his alternate?
That's fine.
Okay. Is the Board okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
The Cultural Council, I haven't received confirmation that they all want to re-up. Some do, but more, the Chair asks why these aren't staggered terms as state law requires. It's never been staggered in Berlin for whatever reason, it's always been annual renewal. So I asked the Chair if she could suggest who she'd want to stagger, if she wants to stagger it, and I haven't heard back. So you could all, you maybe just renew them all on an annual basis, just so that there's no gap? They do have money that they oversee?
I was going to say, we do have time, we have another week.
Yeah, that too.
We can wait until next week.
Right.
Okay, I'll just.
Send another email if you try, or?
No one's answering, but okay.
Either that, or we'll demand that they come to the next meeting, how's that?
Or we could randomly stagger them, too. Maybe we could always just.
Right, or we could choose.
Yep. But we have a week, so let's see if they come back next week.
Okay. Any questions as we go through this?
Economic Development Committee are waiting for the co-recommendation of the Planning Board.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, and Paul hasn't decided if he'd like to stay anyway. He's thinking about it, and Connie just, I don't think has the time. We need somebody with, you know, some more availability. She missed the last meeting, we'll miss the next one. There's some folks that I think can participate more actively and contribute better. It'd be better if she wasn't reappointed.
As she stated, she doesn't want to be reappointed.
She stated she wants to be reappointed. She thinks she's been reappointed, she's accepted it, which is not the case, as you know. So Mary asked her if she'd like to be reappointed, and she responded, "Thank you for the reappointment." Does some confusion.
I got a couple of things. It was really hard filling, I know it took a while to fill the position. The other thing is, maybe before we tell her she's been unappointed, if you could talk to her and see whether.
I've tried.
Okay.
Have you talked with Tim Wheeler?
I have.
Okay.
He's inquiring.
Okay. Maybe we give that another week, too?
As you prefer.
How many meetings is she missing? 10%, 30, 50?
Perhaps half. I haven't computed it, but, and then there's the participation between meetings.
I think since I've been there almost five months, probably 40, 50%.
And then there's the between-meeting participation, as you all know, there's a lot of in-between-meeting activities that are needed to make it happen. Let's leave it at that.
Either way, I think somebody has to talk to her. I don't think, I'm not comfortable just tossing her off.
Well, I'm not suggesting you unappoint her, just not reappoint her.
Okay.
I don't want to go that far.
Okay. Yeah, we just need to, we need to straighten out the confusion and, and let us know your recommendation after there's an actual good conversation with her.
Well...
If possible.
Maybe.
I get it.
I get it. Talk offline.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't know, Trish, Trish can, you want anything you can get through beyond what you said?
No, I just think it, to make an active, to make an active board, it's nice to have participation. I mean, it just makes it easier. I think, I feel like there's an imbalance, that's all. It just makes it easier as in any, any team, board, committee.
And we're crossing our fingers that Paul comes back or remains.
I think you need to talk to him too then.
Oh, I am.
Okay.
So then how many would you be left with if Cornelia doesn't come back?
Well, four. If she doesn't come back, we'll be left with four. If Paul doesn't come back, which I'm crossing my fingers he will, then of course it'll be four or three.
All right.
Bottom of page four, home day committee?
Yes.
Is that gonna be, stay for this year?
Make that go away.
It is not gonna be on, okay.
They actually got their approval for their nonprofit.
I found out, good.
Yes.
All right.
We're just waiting for Recreation to come back and the tentative date right now is September 29th.
All right. And you're gonna join the group, right?
Hey, I sent, I got lots of stuff. You hang out at the transfer station. Got lots of information.
September, what was it, the 29th?
29th.
All right.
Is the tentative. We need to make sure that the fields are available.
Free, yeah. All right, so that answers that question.
The page five Investment Advisory Board?
Mm-hmm.
One vacancy. Judy Bubman doesn't want to renew. There's four other seats. Eloise hesitated to say that she would renew because she thought that Dennis wanted to shrink the board from five to three. So I, I actually had asked for feedback from him on it and I didn't get it yet, but...
We should have gotten him. Is he still around?
I could chase him down the hallway.
So do we know why he wants to shrink it to three?
Just thinks it might be easier to arrange for meetings. And they haven't really met in a couple years anyhow, so it's extremely intermittent, but to get everyone together even still has been proven difficult, I guess.
So you've gotten feedback from?
One.
Bill Lowe?
Nope. The, all the, everyone in gray has not answered me.
Oh, all right.
Including Dennis?
Yeah, including Dennis.
Okay.
So...
I would put Ellie in orange as caution, doesn't really want to renew, but, um...
And they've had good attendance at that?
Well, they really haven't met in a couple of years.
Oh, okay.
So...
So, once again, is this a board if it's not meeting that we need to have because of a law or because of a, I mean?
I think it's advisory to Dennis, but...
You did say something about it needing, in the future, this coming year, that there may be a need for it? Wasn't that?
Was it in the, the investment or the insurance advisory?
Insurance advisory.
Okay.
The insurance advisory.
Yeah.
I can ask, I'll just ask Dennis.
Because I mean, if it's not, if it's not meeting, not doing anything, is it required? Why do we keep appointing people to it?
Why don't we just inquire from, inquire Dennis to answer those questions first?
Pipeline Study Committee?
Yeah, I remember last year we appointed them and, just as a precaution, I think.
Yep, they haven't had any matters before in two years and they didn't file a report last year and I don't think that Tennessee Gas is still around here. Unless you feel like you want to keep them on the books.
You have any?
I, I guess I would at this point dissolve and if we need to put it back together, we know where to find them.
Agreed.
Okay.
They found you originally. Sexual harassment officer? Been thinking of switching that up.
Yeah. Are you comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I did bring you the books. That's what those are over there.
Thank you.
Oh, boy.
More reading.
Mm-hmm. And KP?
Town Barred Committee.
We shouldn't need that anymore either, right?
I haven't been getting any either.
Well, you're, you're being asked and Keith and Tom Sanford, but Dennis Bartlett said yes.
Yeah, I'll say yes.
Be there for the party.
Anyhow.
Right?
We're gonna assign you the, the party for the open house, okay?
I'll be in charge of beverages.
All right.
And I know there's just some talk about looking at Town Council, but if you want to keep it status quo.
I think Keith and Tom probably both wouldn't mind being appointed.
I'd imagine.
Okay. Now, was this, was this the one that was created to do the project that's now done or it's, it's now an advisory committee?
It was a built advisory committee.
Yeah, it was more an advisory committee before it was built.
Um, Paul, do you see a need to continue?
I'm sorry?
Do you see a need to continue this committee now that it's built or what are your thoughts on?
To be honest, I haven't even been in the new building and I haven't had any discussions with Keith, so I don't know the answer to that.
There's been no meetings in two years.
I don't, I can't imagine that there's any real reason because it's up and
Maybe we should ask Keith.
Waiting for occupancy.
See if there's any need for it.
I mean, my guess is that this is another one that we don't really need to keep on the books and you don't need to chase people around for something that's not being...
I think it shifts over to highway operations at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The next one?
There's all buzzing about Town Council. I don't know if you...
Yeah.
I think we need to...
I think we need to have a discussion about that.
This can be changed at any time, so we're ready to change course.
Even if we were to appoint, I think we can...
Yeah, it's not a contract. It's an appointment that you can revoke.
But seeing as how we're waiting till next week, we could wait till next week. And I didn't know whether the board wanted me to do some investigation. See, give, maybe give our current attorney a call, find out what's going on.
Yeah.
Getting back to us in a timely manner.
We need to have certain things guaranteed. We need to have, when we send the warrant over, we need to have that back in a timely fashion.
Exactly.
We can't wait for it for three weeks.
Right.
That's not gonna work.
So if you'd like, I can follow up with the phone call to KP Law and then maybe do some other kind of investigation to see what the process is. Okay. Sound good?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
If I may, um, Town Council is lost in two different situations currently, so I, I just hope that there wouldn't be any changeover until those situations are resolved.
I suspect that this is, I suspect this is more a, we need to talk about expectations on our end.
Yeah.
Rather than a, I mean, KP Law's a pretty of most communities in the area use them.
Right, use them.
But we need to have an understanding that we can't, like I said, we can't wait three weeks for legal to come back and have them come back, you know, two days before town meeting with the recommendations for the warrant. That's not gonna work.
No, it will not affect those issues.
Is this something that's plagued the board for a while or is something new?
It's plagued the board since I've been on and I think before that. So we'll, we'll have a chat.
Is it time to reconsider your choices?
It may be. It doesn't preclude us from using the one that we're using, say, for example, for conservation or Board of Health. Doesn't preclude us from using them. I think it's really just, is it like a listing? Is it like required that you appoint? That's the kind of thing I was gonna look into.
I would think you'd have the latitude to choose council you want or to council.
Right. We do have special council that we've used for other things.
Well, that's being added to the list this year.
Yes, we added.
There's a special Town Council for Labor specifically being added this year.
She's been terrific about getting back to us and right on top of things, so we'll keep her on our list. All right.
So would, would you have a little more persuasive power if you resolved to change council? If it's not resolved by a certain time? You know, maybe set a deadline amongst yourselves and then, then you can tell council that you've set a deadline by which you're gonna do something.
I think there, there may be reasons why things have not gone as quickly as we would like. And we want to hear those reasons, but we still regardless need answers to certain things in a timely manner. So that's the conversation I'll have.
Yeah, and I think at this point it is a concern, it's a, it's a conversation about expectations. And then we would see if they meet set expectations going forward before we made a change.
Two odd years is a long time.
Yeah, but there, there are other factors here, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
The Town Management Study Committee was created with no actual expiration date, but they are appearing in the town report as being annual. So I just asked them all today if they want to be renewed.
I think they do.
And I'm sure they do.
I'm sure they do.
Um, and then the only other one that I, is coming up though, but not at the end of May, at the end of June, is the Capital Planning Committee. Judy Roth Bart Tate does not want to be renewed and John Salera hasn't answered yet and was decided at town meeting. So there is a potential for one and possibly two vacancies of the, the two selectmen seats.
Do we need to advertise, I would say?
Well, all of these that are in red are vacancies. They could be advertised now. And then there is one application that came in during the meeting for the Historical Commission, which I will give to the Historical Commission for feedback.
Okay.
Unless you want to look at it. The tip, the regular procedure is to give it to the committee for feedback.
Okay.
Which I'll do.
As long as we're discussing that, I think, I think it would be good to set a meeting with the Historical Commission. My understanding is they have not met this year. And I think there are a couple of things, like it would be nice to get a group together to discuss the Bullard House and maybe discuss the Historical Commission and, and how they would like to go forward since they haven't met in a year.
We're getting to that part of the agenda where we're gonna look at liaisons, Lisa.
And then the other piece of this that I wanted to bring up, I would like to, the Rail Trail Advisory Committee, my understanding is that their report is imminent. I would like to set a time. I don't want to reappoint for a year. I would like to set a time limit on that committee where it has a, a set end date. Perhaps we can talk to Mary and see when that report is coming, but I, I don't think that we should leave that open for another year.
And tell, tell me why? Not that I'm against this, I'm just curious.
Well, their, their goal was set two years ago to put a report, a study report together. I think probably two years is, is a good amount of time to do that. And I think at this point, i- it's not constructive to leave that going on. It's causing more problems than it is solutions. And, and I just, I would like to see the report or, you know, have that be done.
Okay, do you want to let her, perhaps a letter of some kind or an email to that effect?
Um, I, I think we can just ask Mary, even if we can send, say, you know, Mary, we need a date for the report.
Okay.
The anticipated date for a report.
Anticipated date for a report.
Okay.
Do we want to give her a time limit though, to say no later than?
I mean, my feeling is that this committee should not stay active for more than six to eight weeks. It should be, it should be done.
You might want to get some feedback from them first.
Yeah, I mean, Peg was asking. That's just my gut feeling is this report has been imminent for a while now. So it's sort of time to
Do it.
Do it.
Do it or not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have we addressed them all?
Yep, I think that I had questions on.
Okay, great. All right. We're moving on to the Earthworks Bylaw Review. We you had mentioned that Joe Atu, our building inspector, may be interested in taking a look at the bylaw?
Mm-hmm. He would take, like to take a look at the bylaw and make some suggestions as to how to go forward with that. Perhaps how to restructure the bylaw, how to maybe restructure into an actual Earthworks board with, with specific people with specific skills on it that can then but, I mean, my sense is, I didn't want to just tell him to do it because my sense is this would be something that would sort of be a project and we would have something by fall town meeting. But I would like him to have permission to go ahead and pursue that.
Okay, now, we also talked with Amy at the last meeting about taking a look at it.
Yeah, and he was in the room and I know at least one of her suggestions he, he had heard, but yeah, I would say maybe have him look at it.
Either look at them separately and then put the recommendations together or they could would it be a good idea to have them work together on this?
Well, I guess my initial thought was, we already paid Joe, so maybe let him have a stab at it and then get legal's input on what he comes up with.
I think then run it by Amy?
Absolutely. I mean, definitely we want Amy involved. It's a, it's a bylaw. She would have to be anyways.
Right.
But I think we could probably start with Joe.
Agreed.
Okay. All right.
All right, then I will let him know to pursue.
All right. I, I know you're here as an attorney for Crosby Road.
Correct.
We don't have that on the agenda tonight.
It's on the agenda that I saw.
Yeah, because we didn't hear from anyone when I came in to talk with Mary today, we took it off the agenda, but that was probably it, it had to be like noon time or something.
No updated agenda was sent out.
What's that?
It is on the, it is on the town's website for hosting meetings.
And also, the, the agenda
Can you change the agenda back close to a meeting?
The agenda item that was on there was not concerning you specifically. It was a question that Paul had, I believe. It was not, when you come in, we need an appointment because we need to make an arrangement for our attorney to be here.
We said at the last meeting that we'd be back this week.
But we didn't get any paperwork from you until 4:30 this afternoon. And that's not enough time for our attorney to look at what you've sent in and for us to arrange for her to be here.
Well, my clients are under some pretty large financial constraints due to the cease and desist order. So we expected to be on the agenda tonight. We saw we were on the agenda and we planned on being here because we were on the agenda.
Yeah, but that wasn't, like I said, that wasn't you specifically. Paul had a, you had a question, correct, Paul, for this evening for Crosby Road?
No, that's to River Road and Gates Point.
Right.
Put on the agenda today. It specifically said 104 Crosby Road.
I sent an email to you actually this afternoon trying to tell you not to come.
What time?
I have to go check my computer.
Yes, you did, because I got a copy of it.
5:21.
5:21 PM?
Yep. About an hour, less than an hour after you sent your documents, two hours early.
Yeah, I was already at my son's baseball game at 5:21 PM.
Yeah, and we did, and we watched all week to see whether documents would come in and we had Amy waiting for documents and we didn't see them, so our assumption was that you were not coming in and we did not arrange for our attorney to come in.
Okay, so when is your next meeting?
Monday.
Okay.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, oh, there's a holiday.
But however
Memorial Day.
You have, you have permission to speak with Amy directly if you'd like.
Correct. But we're relying on that agenda that we were to come in today. I mean, to get an email at 5:21 PM on the day of a meeting for 7:00 PM is...
Well, 4:30 for informational email for the same day isn't really that appropriate either.
I just assumed she would be here at the meeting. We were on the agenda.
No, I put it on the agenda in hopes that the documents would arrive over the weekend for her review. They came at the end of the day today, so it was taken off the agenda late this afternoon, within an hour of you sending your documents. It was too late.
We need to be placed on the next agenda, please.
As long as our attorney is... As long as our attorney is available.
We can't have, we can't have an attorney, pay an attorney to sit here every week.
No.
We need to have a heads up on that.
You did issue a cease and desist order, so that's the situation where, you know.
Right. So we can, tentatively, but I think if you and Amy can work things out and then send the information to us, I'm not sure we'll need to have you at a meeting. I would say get in touch with her.
Okay, we're running on permits that were validly issued for, from the Conservation Commission, from the Building Department for the Foundation, from the Building Department for the building of the home. Everything that we purchased, my clients purchased this lot as a buildable lot with all of these permits in place as far as conservation was concerned. We validly applied for all permits, received all permits. At the meeting last week, we were requested to go back and fill out an earth removal or earth moving application for something that you need to apply for before you're issued a building permit. Our building permit has already been issued.
I think these are things you probably need to.
We need to take up with you. We cannot help you with this, we need to have our attorney present.
Okay, but we have a member, a specific member of the Conservation Commission, Walter Bickford, telling us that he, his issue is not with us. His issue is with a previous owner and that we can get our money back from the previous owner.
Well, you.
So there's something going on here.
Walter does not speak for the Conservation Board.
Right, it's something, and then the time is ticking on our permits here, so. These are issues that, whatever's happening behind the scenes with this lot does not involve the present owners.
Right.
And we are not trying to purposely delay you in any way. We just need to have our, we need to have our attorney present and we need to have enough time in order for her to look at the documents that you send over. This is not a purposeful delay. We got the documents at 4:30. She didn't have time to look them over, she couldn't make arrangements to be here.
So I question on what circumstances the cease and desist order was issued?
She's got that information too.
Once again, our attorney is not here.
So you've got her number.
Okay, so do I have to do anything besides tonight to officially request to be on the next agenda?
We can tentatively put you on the agenda, but we will confirm it. Because if things are taken care of outside of the meeting and all it is is informational for us, I don't know that it'll be necessary for you to be here.
And Amy also needs to.
If she's, and her availability to.
She needs to be available to be here.
Do they have alternate counsel that can come to meetings if she's not available?
That I can't answer, I don't know.
And when is your next meeting? If she's not available, when is your next meeting after?
We meet every Monday, except when there's a holiday, then it's a Tuesday.
Actually, you're not going to be.
Oh, that's right, we're going to start, we're going to start our summer hours, which is every other week.
But how about we see, you know, let's check and see whether Amy is available on Monday, how things go, or Tuesday, sorry, Tuesday, how things go when you speak to her. Let's not anticipate that there's going to be a problem with her being here, let's.
Every day that the construction is delayed is costing my clients money. And we're being, a cease and desist order is being put on us for matters that don't even relate to them. It has to do with past owners of the property. So we need to try to get this resolved expeditiously.
Absolutely.
So that there's no further financial harm to my clients.
Yes.
But also.
Thank you.
Once again, you also had a week to get Amy the documents that she got at 4:30 today, so.
The first meeting we were supposed to appear at, we did not find out until that afternoon that your attorney can come. My husband and I both canceled business meetings to be able to be at that meeting, hired our attorney to come out to that meeting, found out that afternoon we were being postponed two additional weeks. So I would like the same courtesy being pushed back on us because we've been very considerate of the rules that are being played. But that same courtesy wasn't extended to us and we had.
Are you asking to be put on the email list?
No, not the email list.
Okay.
I'm saying, you're saying we didn't give adequate time. But the same thing happened to us after we canceled two trips to be here for the first meeting that pushed off two weeks. We still paid our attorney because he was.
We, you have counsel, we're communicating through your counsel, not.
She's talking about a meeting prior to my involvement.
But I'm pretty sure I said directly after this happened that I was not comfortable with doing this without counsel present and that we needed to wait for counsel. And I remember an email going out. I would have to check specifically when it did, but I'm pretty sure an email went out pretty directly.
He sent multiple emails asking, requesting to be on the agenda and we did not find out until Monday afternoon that we were not being put on the agenda. And it did go through counsel. I'm just stating that because that's, it's a work issue for us that we canceled those trips.
We'd just like to reiterate, we have people that are trying to move into this community. They're trying to build a nice home in this community.
And.
And they feel they're being treated unfairly due to issues that have nothing to do with them.
We are doing the best that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is the Board of Health request to access town council. And I believe we did give that permission. However, we've got it on the agenda and we're going to make it clear to everybody.
And you had an additional. I can let Amy know and Concon can let her know to talk with your attorney Watzke, I believe it is, for Scott Goddard. And that's relative specifically to River Road, Gates Pond Road. There's an intersection, the lot is on River Road on the riverside. And wetlands, Ronald Pool, I mean, there's.
Yep.
You know, DEP is weighed in. We, Board of Health has temporarily rescinded the septic permit because of information we were not aware of when we voted on it. And I know I occasionally get emails from Scott Goddard, you know, what's up, what's happening? And it really should be in the attorney's hands at this point.
And that's what you need to maybe make clear to him.
As a tag along of Board of Health thing, we're, the recycling in this country has gone haywire. And I'm working on a draft document for the transfer station for the citizens and all that that I would appreciate if counsel could give it a quick seat. It's going to be a one-page, fairly straightforward. But I want to be clear where we stand so that we don't get into arguments with citizens.
Do you have any objection?
No.
Is this something that, is this something we've done before?
We, the board has never, never asked for access, at least not in my, however many years.
Now all of a sudden.
Yeah, all of a sudden, yeah.
My feeling on this is we're better off having legal counsel take a look at it than getting in trouble later on and having to.
It'll really be, it's going to be pretty straightforward and simple.
All right.
But I just would feel a lot better if they gave their okay so we don't end up in some kind of conundrum with the public. Thank you.
All right. All right, I think we're set with that one.
Do you want me to connect you with town council? I mean, it may or may not be Amy, on that issue.
Are you?
Maybe get somebody else, it's not always Amy.
It could be Amy.
Okay.
Well, either that or if there are any.
I'll ask both Joel and Amy.
Okay.
Who they would like to connect you with on that.
Yeah.
Let me know or have them contact.
You'll be copy.
Most likely it would be Amy.
Great, thank you.
And where, I've lost my agenda. Ah, there it is. All right. The Chief Procurement Officer, Delegation to School, Financial Services Director for the BMS Playground Project. This is something we just need to take a vote on. The Finance Director at the school is going to be doing.
He is, and.
He is a CPO?
Yeah, he is, he's certified. And since the board earlier agreed that spending for this article will be by the school committee, it's going to be a fixture at the school that the school would oversee that project.
Yeah.
But so that he just advised that he needs to be officially, you know, delegated by me to him as the.
And so therefore, here we are, taking, here we are to take a vote.
You know, although I would sign the form, I just, I think there's a space on there for you to confirm that, so.
Okay. And do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? You guys just say aye.
Well, we'll nudge you.
All right.
We'll nudge you for the aye.
All right.
If you hit that signature on aye, I'll do it next, next to you. Where it's, where it's tagged. Oh, yeah, right next to it, right.
Right next to you?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
I'll write your title in.
All right, anyway. We made a motion, did we say aye? Okay, okay. And this is the annual offset receipt letter to DOR, which is something I did not remember, but Mary reminded, we do every year.
Yeah, it's just one piece of paper you see, but once a year, but it's budgeted for those inspectors.
These are the items that are, what's budgeted for electrical inspections, $52,250 and $80,000 for plumbing and gas inspection offset receipts. And then this is sent off to the Division of Local Services.
With the recap sheet?
Yes. So, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, any other questions that I may or may not be able to answer?
No, may I read it over your shoulder?
Just a comment that Joe will be looking at the fee structures for the, he just got put in charge of the inspectional services for the first time. So he's working with Henry and Al to look at the fee structures and he'll make a recommendation to us shortly. Well, shortly, it'll be for next year because it's already been budgeted for this year.
Okay. That's a good reminder. All right. Did I say? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Where's Piper, she could be reminding you of this.
She could like do this, I just never come up here and do this.
All right, motion passes.
Obviously, there's something more interesting than us.
Apparently. There she is.
We forgot process and we really needed you and you were out in the hallway.
All right. So as Acting Personnel Committee, we, I put these on, or Mary put on the Assistant Tax Collector job description. And I reminded her that we needed a Video Production Assistant job description update so that they could relook at those.
And Dennis came back with approval on the numbers or?
Yes.
You've seen this?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
This morning, this afternoon.
Okay. And you've seen this one too?
Yep.
Okay. So if there's no problems, do I hear a motion to approve the Assistant Tax Collector job description?
Motion to approve the job descriptions.
Seconded.
I'll nudge you too.
It's just. Thank you. I'll just do a little check mark here.
Oh, it's an advertisement?
Yeah, the job descriptions already exist.
That's right, yes, this is the advertisement. All right. Regardless, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the Video Production Assistant, they were going to use the one that they still had posted on the website. But it was a little out of date as far as the hourly pay. So Mary drafted this. And do I hear a motion to approve this one?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. Leaves on assignments.
Oh, thank you.
All right. So as you can see, we have quite a list going for each member. So we would be looking for someone to cover fire, someone to cover accountant, 1870 Town Hall, Bullard House, Rail Trail, Capital Planning, Board of Assessors, is that in yellow for some reason?
That was the last ad.
Okay.
That was the last amendment.
All right. Economic Development, Historical, Library Trustees, Planning Board, and Executive Secretary, I believe, goes to the chair. All right. So, anything stick out to you, Peg? Or any suggestions?
No, I mean, I'm, I know that you guys have a heavy load and that you're already in here and Lisa already told me that she'd probably beat me in arm wrestling since she does, you know, she takes care of the horse. So I quickly abdicated on that one to wrestle anything away from her.
I mean, if, I mean, we can mix it up too.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, it's fine. I mean, the Historical Commission, that one may go away, correct?
I'm not sure it can, I think that is one that.
Well, there hasn't been a lot of contact, I would assume.
She said it hasn't been in a year.
Yeah, but I think it's similar to the Conservation Commission in that we adopted that into our bylaws, so we can't really just make it go through.
Stuff coming forward too.
Yeah.
My dad went to school.
My thought was, you know, we could talk about maybe spinning the Bullard House piece out of the Historical Commission and setting up an actual committee for that, similar to the Town, or the 1870 Town Hall.
I think they have, do they not have a committee together for the Bullard House? No?
No.
Because when they came in here, I thought there was a group of them and I just assumed, I guess.
Historical presented a request for mitigation.
Okay, gotcha.
I mean, I'm okay taking.
And that was about three years ago, I think.
No. Well, yeah, no.
Planning Board and Economic Development. Economic Development is an offshoot from Selectmen and the Planning Board. So that's sort of why Tom had both of those assigned. I mean, it doesn't have to be that way, but.
No, I mean, I'm okay picking up Tom's with the Executive Secretary switching over to you.
Okay.
So we'll draw a little line there. And then I can just dive right in and take care of all the other ones.
Yeah, 1870 will probably also dissolve from a building standpoint. I don't know what they do for managing, they sort of manage the building also. Or what, I mean, what was that set up for specifically?
It wasn't just to oversee, it was to actually run the functioning of it.
Right.
So it's going to be an ongoing thing, it's not just a build committee.
Yeah. But it's sort of, it's been focused on the building.
Tom spent a lot of time with Library Trustees, maybe. Once in a while the accountant and of course the fire. And those probably are the biggies.
Okay.
The others, not so much, because you're all wonderful committees and boards.
No, I'll just jump right in, I'll just jump right in in whatever question I have.
And you can always relook if you think there's a better fit.
Yep.
You know, please speak up.
I shall, I promise.
Oh, I know.
I will.
All right. Okay, then are you upset?
If you voted?
Do you want us to vote them?
If you wish.
All right.
This is something you post up on your website, something for the department to be aware of.
And the other thing is, I think it would be a good idea to resend out an email to these different boards with this again. And it doesn't preclude them from contacting any of the Selectmen.
Yeah, you actually say that right in the notes.
Exactly, I mean, just including that.
I would, yeah, I would send the link.
Link to the website?
Well, it has to be updated, but yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, I guess that's what I would, I would send that link rather than.
All right.
Or in addition to, however you want to do it. We need to take Earth to change all of that.
All right.
Is, was that a vote?
No, no.
We didn't get through yet.
A motion to approve the liaison list.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, Peg, I did share this with Mary this afternoon, or?
Oh, okay.
And I didn't know you had seen.
Oh, the review sheet, yeah.
I mean, I think.
It, it was first pass, knowing that it probably hadn't been updated since we gave it a go, almost ten years ago.
I assumed that was the one that you.
It probably was, and I looked at it and was totally horrified. I mean, things have changed, especially around the ratings, you'd like to, for them to be more specific, and to give examples, if someone is going to be rated a, insert number here, then I'd like to see, oh, they did exceed, they did, you know, they were okay, they're in this middle of the bell curve, instead of just, well, today I wanna be a, and just circle a number. So, as I said, first pass, totally open to suggestions, comments, figured we could get that out as time starts to come into, for reviews, get this around to folks, that they're just not opening it up and going, what? Especially the ratings.
Yeah. Do you, shall we put it on an agenda? For discussion again?
Absolutely.
Since it's really not on tonight, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that I had passed along the information, so that we could.
Yep, cool.
All right.
And more lines for comments.
Yeah.
Next meeting, or do you wanna?
Next meeting's fine, but I mean.
It's, it's fine as long as, you know, unless we have a full agenda. So, why don't we tentatively put it on for next meeting? All right. And is there any other new business? Or old business?
There are two vacancies, the Board of Assessors and the Library Trustees, who's in a failure to elect. So, both of those department heads have asked when the Board would like to have joint election, basically, of new members, but there are no candidates that I've heard that have been named, so I'm kind of premature to set a date when there's no one.
Maybe just send them an email to the fact that when they have someone that they'd like to recommend, or?
Maybe we should advertise also, put something up on the web and say, these are vacant, if you're interested.
Should each of those, they are separately elected entities, create their own advertisement, and then put them up?
If, they may be doing that already, maybe you could touch base and see whether they're doing that already, otherwise, it is a good idea.
I think at this point, we appoint them though, correct?
No, you would jointly elect them.
You would jointly elect them, okay.
A joint election, or a joint appointment?
It means appointment, election, it would be the majority of this board and the majority of their board.
Right.
Okay, yeah, which means I, I guess my feeling is, we can put it out on our website.
I suppose so.
Yeah.
Maybe good if they could give a description of what they want said.
Right.
About who they'd be putting on their committees.
Or maybe if they have some kind of an ad, then you could put it on our website too.
I'll ask for them if they can give me one, if not, I can create one for you guys to look at.
Okay.
And I mean, the thing is, anybody who comes forward, they need to go talk to.
The committees.
The committees, so I'm not, I'm not tons of concerned about what the thing says, because what I would do is say, these are open, please, if you're interested.
Contact.
Contact.
Sounds so.
I don't think it needs to be complicated, I mean, when people get elected, they just go collect signatures and get thrown on the ballot, so. Even talking to the committees would be another step.
Okay. Is there anything else? Any? Selectmen updates? It was a two-night town meeting, and it, it's over, and everything got voted.
The exception of two. You pulled two, didn't you?
Oh, we pulled a couple, yeah.
Yeah.
I was, talked to Dennis, and we need to revisit the health insurance. So I was wondering if we needed to, I mean, we can talk about this next week too, but we need to decide, I think somebody from the Board should be involved in that, probably somebody from Finance. But we need to, we need to do something with the health insurance.
Now, is that the Insurance Advisory Board? I think that's.
But we still, somebody, you know, this is, these are big changes, so somebody from the Board needs to, needs to have input over on that too, or be aware of what's going on with that.
Well, there was, on the Insurance Advisory Board Committee, did it not say they might be looking for a Selectman, or no?
No, that was the Investment Advisory Committee.
See, I'm getting those mixed up.
Yeah.
There really isn't a liaison to Treasurer, Chris, you are to Finance, but.
I mean, I don't mind talking to Dennis about it, or?
Yeah, I mean, he just, we, we need to, his thing was, we need, we need to do something.
All right.
So.
What if we, do, would you mind if I talked to him?
Feel free.
And I'll see what his suggestions are, and maybe I can bring those back?
Okay.
Okay?
Uh huh.
All right.
Actually, I was going to ask you, do you want that next week?
What?
To be re-agenda for next week, or do you wanna tell me when it's ready to come back on?
The insurance issue?
Yeah.
Why don't I tell you? I'll probably talk to him in the next day or so, anyway.
So that's different, because in the past, I used to kind of put stuff on the agenda at any one member's request, and Chris would like me to just present it back to Chris to make that decision as Chair on setting the agenda, so I just wanna let you know that, that's different.
Either that or just copying me and Mary.
It'd be new for you anyhow, it'd be different, it'd be new anyhow, but.
If you want something on the agenda?
I always copy you in any way, because I'm gonna ask for something, so.
Right. Okay. Anything else?
I'm looking, I have a huge list here, but I don't remember.
Oh, you have a huge list, oh boy.
I mean, I've gotten most of them throughout the meeting, I've managed to throw them in where they were appropriate. I guess, one of the things, I did talk to Tom yesterday for about two hours. He is happy to help us transition and to, to help out with, one of the things that he was concerned about, obviously, was the, the Capes of Berlin thing, and he is happy to, he's aware that he's not on the Board, but since he's been handling this, he would be happy to do work off and continue to be involved in that process, he just wants to be under our umbrella if he's going to do that. So I said I would, would talk to you about your thoughts on that. My feeling is, we need that continuity in that area.
Mind if I take a few minutes to think about it? Because I also had wanted to be involved.
Oh, absolutely, I think a Select Board member would be there too, I just.
Right, I mean, I, I had sort of vied for that position as far as the representative remediation with Tom.
Yeah.
But, yeah, let me think about it. I think it's a good thing, we do need to keep him involved, whether it's.
Yeah, and there are a few things, like the admissions of Library, well.
Yes.
We need to get the testing done, there, there's a schedule for that, that he wanted to make sure that we kept on top of.
Right.
With those particular steps.
Yeah.
Lisa, what does work off mean in this context?
Uh, senior work off, he could come in, similar to Judy Boomen, came in and sort of reorganized the office for Mary, this would be Tom coming in and sort of helping to transition the Capes of Berlin thing that he was handling, and.
To reduce his taxes, that work off?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the work off.
He doesn't care so much about that, he just needs to be under, if he's going to give legal.
He has to get a clock.
Legal advice, he needs to be under our insurance. And that's the only reason for going under work off, is to protect him if he's giving, because if he was, when he was on the Select Board, obviously, he's under the Town's protection, and he needs to make sure that if he's going to do things going forward in that capacity, that he's protected.
Okay. Anything else?
Let's leave it at that for tonight.
Ah, okay.
I'll have more, but let's leave it at that for tonight.
All right, you're gonna, we're getting off easy, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I feel like I should ask if there's any other questions from the audience? All right. Then, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.